I'd like to call to order this meeting of the of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners' public hearing for today, Monday, September 23rd, 2013. The first order of business is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the notice of proposed property tax increases. At this time, I will recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted three minutes. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule. We look forward to your comments and in no way mean to diminish anyone's right to speak freely or advise us about an issue relevant to this hearing. We're glad that you want to let us know how you feel about this matter that is under consideration or if you have questions that you need to have answered. We'll try to get the answers before the next hearing if we don't have them related today. There was a list posted in the bag and I have three residents that have signed up. The first resident is Mr. Philip Head.
Good morning. My neighbors, I hope y'all can understand me, I'm trying to force it. My neighbor's still here. I had a 29th morning conference. But I've called, I'm concerned about the deal at Oak Street and office. Called for the post office. My taxes on that deal, of course, is on East Street there, 2011, was $2,699.01. Only 2012 taxes came out, $4,203.63. And also the 2000, when I went down to check on it in 2012, I was out too late to appeal it. So when the tax came out 2013, it's still $4,233.63. And my concern, I thought that was quite a bit increased. That increase is $1,543.62 increase. Mr. Head, we don't have the specifics for that, but Chad, who is our interim county
manager, is taking notes. And if you'll make sure he has your phone number, he will connect you with the Mr. Lillard in the taxing office and we can see if we can get some resolution to this for you, okay? Thank you for coming to share. Next speaker is Ms. Sadie Rogers.
My name is Sadie Rogers. I live at 305 South Gate Drive in Harren Bay, right up off of Highway 155. I'm here and I like to speak for myself and some of my neighbors. First of all, let me say, we're not trying to get out of paying our taxes. We want our taxes assessed fairly, properly, and equitably, which is a problem we have on our street. I might add that we have been down here, I say several of us have been to the tax office for the last three years. When every other county was lowering the taxes, when the economy was tanking, ours kept going up. And we kept hearing that you would do something about it, but nothing was done. Now, here we are, three years later, and we had said, what is going to happen is, they'll take off a few dollars, but in the next year, they're going to add more to the mileage rate, which is exactly what you have done. Now, the issue with us is, on our street, the houses look very similar, but they are not the same. Some of the houses are bigger than other houses. If you drive down the street, they might look the same, but sometimes the bigger houses have a lower tax rate than those who live in a smaller house. We have been trying for three years to get this fixed. It is not fixed yet. We were told last year that somebody, you all, whoever, the tax commissioner, whoever, would send somebody to reassess those properties. That has not been done. Until that is done, we will continue to be treated unfairly because it's just not assessed properly. All we're asking you to do is to fix that issue so that our taxes are properly assessed for the proper house. Now, we don't have a fire department that can get to us in 10 minutes. You all have built a wonderful new water tower in our backyard, but we can't even get a drop of water out of it because we pay $10 to $20 extra to get water from Henry County. So, you know, we've got to ask the question, what are we paying for? We're supposed to have some services that go with this. If we call 911, we're going to get the Henry County Police, then they've got to call you all, and then it's going to take them 15 to 20 minutes to get there. Just saying, look at the big picture. We don't even know who our commissioner is. We're so far up there that the politicians don't even bother us. They don't even bother to come up there and campaign. The only reason we have to come to Griffin is the very reason today and to pay our property taxes. We come down here to vote, but we don't even know who any of you all are. Nobody bothered us. Nobody comes to ask for our vote. That just tells you, we're just enough up on that county line up there, we're lost cause. And we come here to pay our taxes, we come here to vote in a state. Past that, we don't know who any of you are. My question is simply this, could we get the county, once and for all, to come to our community, reassess our property fairly and equitably? My neighbor's house across the street is exactly like my house, but the house is assessed differently on the taxes. Now, he may have a little brick on the front of his house, or it may be painted a different color, but inside of the house and outside is exactly the same. But you all have it in your records. We have brought all of this stuff down here, we have proven it to you in every kind of paper we know how. Well, yes, we need to do something about it, but it hasn't been done yet. All we're saying is, we want to pay our taxes, but please, get the houses properly assessed. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, Ms. Rogers, if you would, could you give Chad your contact information? May I ask, we have Ms. Joyce Adams, who is speaking for her family.
I'm reading this because my mom has allergies and she can't, her voice goes up and down. This is all that-
Excuse me, Ms. Adams, could you give us your name and address, please?
Joyce Adams, 102 Cathy Lane, Brooklyn.
Right, thank you.
All that pay your salaries, expect to listen to and expect to be respected and have the board do what is morally right. You say one thing, then the opposite shows up in several papers later. People have a right to expect the managers and boards to tighten your belts just as much and cut your spending. We had to live off the land. We worked at public positions 12 hours a day. When I graduated from high school in 1945, I worked for two hardware stores owned by the Holworths for $80 a month. Hard for you to believe, I'm sure. I still live with my parents, but I was rich in 1945 and we had a good name, but Spalding County definitely does not. This comes from another county office, and I didn't ask for this comment. It appears to our family that all the wars were in vain, lives were forever changed. Why should a senior go into a city manager's office for a telephone number in his or her district and be asked for it? They want to give you the third degree and tell you they will get back to you in a week. Thankfully, mine did not. He did call me back, which I greatly respect for that. This is absurd and unacceptable. You are supposed to be servants, not rulers. That tries to keep matters hidden, and that is also unacceptable. If you're out of your office, out of town, you should leave someone else to be trained that can pay, to help educate or answer our questions while you're out of town, since we're paying your salary. Some have paid tax, all, not just 85%, and some have not received their overpayment back after asking for it. Why? Do they have to sue? This is not, this is, this is not honest. God will never bless Spalding County as long as y'all are guilty of adding more stress and trying to steal and harm veterans, families, and all honest taxpayers. We don't think you can cheat those who suffered from age 21 to 87 for you to ignore and try and harm and take what we've worked for. We lived off the land, and my late beloved husband worked for 30 years in the hardware store. 38 years of appeals to the US government finally got 100% disability, which was due to him in 1945. I have worked hard at home. We've had cows, chickens, lambs, the kids raised on a bottle of goats that came out of the blue, planted apples, plums, peas that were developed at the experiment station for Spalding County Agriculture and Suck and Sewell. Also, scovenants, had a garden, and I can do everything I could, making jelly jams, and had enough to eat until the next season. Also deer, timber, wildlife, et cetera. Why do you dishonor those who have gone before you and want to invent borrowed money to have an archive? Do not, do not bomb threats, send you some kind of a message, they sort of scare me. Why do you not listen to what people want? This is not, not good judgment. People are moving out of Spalding County because of the current rate of the taxes, and y'all said one mil, and now it's gone up. Why do y'all make your meetings kind of inconvenient for people that work? I mean, not many people get in love at like lunch hour, not many people get off before 5:00 o'clock. And how can your tax bills show that you've made improvements on your property when you've done nothing during the 5 or 10 years?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Could you give, ma'am?
Ma'am.
Could you give Chad your, your contact phone number? Is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to sign up, who would like to have an opportunity to speak? Come to the podium, please, give your name and address.
My name's Sandra Howard. I live at 433 Tulluga Drive, Sun City, PA. My main question is that five, six years ago, Sun City didn't exist. There's now 600-plus homes, which probably brings in well over a million dollars in property taxes, but yet you keep raising the property taxes. It just doesn't make sense that you can't operate within budget when you have all these homes being added every year. You have, I mean, we're adding 100 and some homes a year to the tax base, and it just doesn't, doesn't seem right that you can't seem to budget. And I know that you lost some for the schools because the average income went up, but it just doesn't seem logical that Sun City has brought all these homes. We're now at 630 homes and growing. It doesn't make sense that you can't deal within that budget and you have to keep raising taxes. And you keep raising ours, and like a lady from Harren Bay said, many of us have, you know, challenged our taxes and we get nowhere. So it seems to be useless to, to challenge how our taxes keep going up.
If you will, give Chad your, your information. Give you a name and your address.
My name is, excuse me, Jerry Van Diel, 803 Peach Blossom Court.
Spell your last name?
V-A-N-D-Y. It's also out of Sun City, PA. And I wasn't going to speak today, I just came here just to see how the process works. But I had a meeting with Larry Little a couple of months ago, because I discovered a lot of inconsistencies in my little neighborhood alone. We have a neighborhood of 58 homes, out of the 600 and some that are out there. And I saw some real inconsistencies in the way people were being assessed, in the values of their assessments. So I went to Mr. Lillard and spent about two and a half hours with him. Real happy he didn't take and spend that much time with me. But I pointed out to him some of the inconsistencies, and the way the assessments are being done has some unfairness to it. First of all, we found out a number of homes that are being assessed, they assess things like a fireplace. So they have extra assessment, extra value given to the home if it has a fireplace. We only showed one home in the, out of 58 that I looked at, that did not have a fireplace. I knew five or six, so I shared that information with people in our neighborhood, and numerous people have appealed because of that, because they're being over-assessed for fireplaces. They're also being over-assessed because of the number of what they call fixtures in their houses. Fixtures are your plumbing items. And the way the assessor's office is doing it, they're just using, they're saying every home is the same for the number of fixtures, every home is the same for the number of fireplaces, pretty much, and that's not the way it is out there. There's standard homes, you've got standard prices on the homes, and then there's options, lots of options that you put into your homes out there. So I brought all this to Mr. Little's attention, and as a real result of that, I think there've been numerous appeals, so it's probably an overburdened office this year. But the whole process is that the homeowners are not being told what they're being assessed on. And I suggested to him that they could send out a flyer every year saying, what you're being assessed on. For instance, you're being assessed if you have a fireplace. You're being assessed extra depending on your fixtures, your tubs, your showers. You're not being assessed on things like wood floors versus carpets. You're not being assessed if you have cold crown molding, things like that. People don't know what they're being charged for, and I think that needs to be changed. He told me he has no money to do that. He's got 30,000 homeowners, he said, more than, a little more than 30,000 homeowners in the community or properties in the county, and he doesn't have the money to do that kind of thing. Something you may want to consider, and you may save a lot of time in the appeal process if people know what they're being charged for. And I know at least a couple hundred appeals just out of Sun City alone, as a result of some of the things that we found. That's it.
Thank you for sharing, and if you will, give Chad your information.
I just came to hear what you all were going to say, and I'm part 30th, I live at 680 Collins Street. And I'd like to just echo what everyone's been saying about the tax valuations, because they are so wrong in many cases that you go down and protest, and you can't, I was an appraiser for 50 years, you can't go down and discuss values based on willing buyer, willing seller, and nobody under duress. They've got some kind of system that you can't understand, you can't, you can't argue with them on the basis of what they're accusing. And I think you all know the values are just screwed up. Some of them would be, look, I had one that I didn't even protest, and they dropped, it was a farm, and they dropped it $60,000. I wouldn't even go ask for that one, because it was questionable. I wouldn't go to the trouble. They dropped the value of $60,000, I was thrilled to death, because it's a piece of land that doesn't produce any income. But I could just go down the list of properties that I own. I've got four houses in a row, just alike, and they are all at different values, because they didn't use the same appraiser for all four. They used different. How you do that, I don't know, but please, don't go changing them. One or two of them I liked that, the others, I wouldn't go stating about. But I wish you could do something about that. I've lived here all my life, know most of you, and I know you're good, hardworking, honest people, trying to do your job, but there's something, the taxes in Spalding County used to be right in line with everybody else, but it seems, and I don't know whether you go around and check what other property taxes are in the county nearby, but they're, they're low. People at Sun City come in here thinking that they're going to be right, and they find that their taxes aren't there, their valuations, their tax rate is high. And something else, I've supported the airport growth since they first started trying to do something, but the people here don't want it, and I think you ought to listen to the people. I don't know why we keep going with this, because the federal government's going to pay 90%. That's taxpayer's money, it's not the government, it's people who pay taxes. And I, I think y'all listen to what folks say, and if most of them are saying they don't want it, and please, one other thing, I'll quit. Don't talk about a wish list, that's the worst sounding thing for me. I wish for a lot of things. I wish I wasn't living on half the income I was living on four years ago. I've had to adjust to it, and I wish you all would not have a wish list. If we need something bad, let's have, let's go after it. But don't call it a wish list, call it a dire need list or something. Thank you.
Ms. Serz. At this time, as we read before, none of the commissioners are allowed to make any comments during public hearing, but at this time, if there were any other commissioners would like to comment, I know you can't really give the specifics, but if you'd like to make any comments relating to any of the statements made today by our residents, you may. Commissioner Miller?
Commissioner Johnson? I would. I really do appreciate you coming out and speaking. I've been a commissioner now in Bart for like eight months, and this is a very difficult time that we're facing. And having you come out and speak and letting us know and understand where you're coming from really means a lot, and we will definitely, definitely take things into consideration.
Commissioner Ray?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. We have two more hearings, one this afternoon at 5:00 and another one on Thursday afternoon. Is that right, Chad?
Yes. October 1st.
Okay. So there'll be two other opportunities on the hearings. A lot of the issues that have come up today are tax assessor issues, and with that, we will connect the respective taxpayers to the tax assessors, and we'll follow up with, through Chad, to ensure that those items are addressed, especially the young lady over here up on the north side of town, or the north side of county. Understand, the Board of Commissioners reset the mileage rate, and the assessments are set by the Spalding County Tax Assessors. They have a Board of Three, and that Board of Three reviews all tax assessments, and if at any time there's an appeal on a tax assessment, it goes before that Board of Three or within the tax assessors, and then it goes to the Board of Equalization. And right now, there are about 2,900 tax appeals outstanding on the Board of Equalization. We have no management of that board, we have no control of that board, we just get blamed, and that's okay, that's part of our job. But with that, that's part of the reason, one of the questions that came up was, why are taxes going up? Well, 2,900 tax appeals has a, has a bearing on revenues, and it has had a bearing on revenues. That's one of the items that have come up. And I regret some of the things that have been stated in this room and put in the media, but those are individuals with their opinions without all the facts. And if anyone would like to address those, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
I made a few notes, but first I want to say this, I totally, absolutely agree with most of the comments. A resident asked me to check on the property taxes for a building. The property was valued, had been valued at like $36,000. The people called me about the house on the property, the roof had fallen in around the fireplace, the place had been vandalized, there was no wiring or plumbing left in the house. And after asking the Tax Assessor's Office to go back and relook at that, I got some information, maybe it was because I'm the commissioner, I don't know, but anyway, three or four days later, they told me that they revalued the house at about half that value. And, and that says to me that everything that you guys are saying is very real. I mean, and, you know, as Mr. Serz, who said, you know, you kind of don't want to go and tell them when they made a mistake because you're paying so much on the other end. So, and as Commissioner Ray said, we have, we have a backlog of taxes. Unfortunately, a lot of this has to do with the Tax Assessor's Office, which they're not really under our control, except for we appoint those people, and the rest of it has to do with the Clerk of Court's office, who is charged with hearing these appeals. And I'm very disappointed that there were so many appeals that have not been completed. So, you know, as commissioners, I think the only thing that we can really do from our vantage point is to pressure them. They're elected officials, just like we are, but maybe not enough of us is saying to them, this is a really big problem and it really needs to be addressed. I, I, to my understanding, and I'm not an authority on this, I don't think that they're supposed to be assessing your house based on what you have inside of it, because the assessor can assess your house without you being there. So how do they know you have a garden tub or, or whatever? And I think that you're absolutely right, that there needs to be some set standard. I understand that Mr. Lillard did come out to Harren Bay and did an open house or an open public meeting, maybe a month or two months ago, but maybe a lot of people didn't know about it. But I don't know what the information was in that meeting, so I can't speak specifically to that. Just for Ms. Rogers's information, your commissioner is Commissioner Chipper Gardner. I understand that he has had several public hearings out there, but you are certainly welcome to come to our meetings every Monday, first Monday and first Thursday of every month. And there is a gentleman here who puts out a newsletter to Harren Bay residents on upcoming things and then what happened after the event, but you're welcome to be here. At Sun City, excuse, not Harren Bay, Monday morning for me. Sun City, but that is your commissioner, Chipper Gardner. The water tower that was built out there was built at the request of the owners of Sun City. I'm not sure about why it is that you're not getting water. I know that it, I know that- I know that it, I know that it was to increase the pressure on that end of town. That I'm sure Chad can address, help address for you, to you for that. But the infrastructure involved in putting that there was rather costly. But we will try to have all those things addressed. I don't know that we have any power about this, but the lady spoke about the overpayments and not getting your money back. There is nothing that makes me any madder than, you know, if I owe you money, I got to give it to you in thirty days. If you owe me money, it takes a year for me to give it back. I don't know what the policy is on that, but I think that it should be, if I owe you money, you need to get it back in thirty days. And I would certainly ask Chad to look that up and find out why it is that that's not happening, because that's not fair at all.
Do you feel like to ask also if they'll go back to 1951?
I wasn't even born then, so I really don't know. That's what I'm saying. But also, I don't, I just not, I'm not real sure why in Sun City, one group of homes in the same group are being assessed differently, because they're basically supposed to be assessed on square footage. If your fireplace is an exterior piece, then it should be consistent down the line if that is what's happening. So, certainly we'll ask about that. I, you know, I just, and Mr. Cersey about the wish list, the reason, and I'm sorry that that kind of offends you, but the only time we address our wish list is when they're on SLOF funds. And the reason that we do that is because SLOF funds are dollars that we may or may not get. That is not, has nothing to do with the general fund. It has nothing to do with your property taxes. That's if people come and shop in Spaulding County. That is the only way that money is generated. And generally, what's on the wish list is stuff we can't afford to pay for out of general fund. So, for those of us who affectionately want to have some roads paid, we wish we could. You know, so that's why that is, but we will certainly take into consideration with that. But I just want to say, you know, when we look at the big picture, and I'm a person who likes visuals, you know, out of that pie, almost sixty percent of your taxes that you're paying go to the school board, and the other percentage goes to us and the fire fund or whatever. And I know many of the people at Sun City don't have children, and I know many of the people that are here today that are seniors don't have children in school. I can't fix that. I'm sorry. I mean, that's just how that works, and whether or not the money is being spent properly or equitably in that area, I can't, I can't address that. But our goal actually was to be able to, when we did the reassessments, were not to harm people. It was certainly to find properties that had been upgraded that we were still charging people at a lower rate. But I don't think that it's fair just because you have a nice piece of property or a nice house that you should be overcharged for that. And certainly, we will do everything to address this with the Board of Assessors. Ninety percent of what people have said today is that they got issues with the Board of Assessors. So, we're going to have to figure out how we can use whatever it is that we have to address that and to address changing the appeals process, speeding the appeals process. I urge you, and I urge anyone that you know that has discrepancy, to please make an appeal. That's your right. And if people are not talking to you in a way that you feel is respectful when you're doing that, that should be noted, and you should always find out who it is that you're talking to. We can't, we can't really make them better, but we can do a lot of fussing about it, and we can, we can ask the people in the tax assessor's office to move those people from those spots. But again, I just, I would like to thank you all for coming. I'm very sorry that this meeting is being held at this time in the morning. I'm a proponent of meetings being held when people are not working. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the scheduling of this meeting or the five o'clock meeting because I know when I was working, I couldn't get here before six o'clock either. So, I just thank you guys for showing up, and I thank you for sharing your concerns, and we will try to address them as soon as possible. If you have, anyone else has any concerns, Chad will be here after the meeting. He will be happy to jot down what your concerns are, get a contact number, and try to get a response back to you as soon as possible. If there are no other comments, entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Chair, move to adjourn this public hearing.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and second by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn this public hearing. All those in favor, show a hand. Four, zero. Leading this term.